All right, at 5:30, we'll go ahead and get started. Everybody can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone who is joining us here in the building or on Zoom. We appreciate it. Tonight is our semi-annual retreat. We will be discussing our annual board self-assessment and goal-setting, 25, 26 preliminary strategic plan objectives, 25, 26 key performance indicators and targets, 25, 26 board meeting reporting calendar. So we will get started. I will turn it over to Dr. Pierce.
Great, thank you. And just so everybody knows, Lance Hansen, our incoming superintendent, has joined us. He's here on Zoom, so.
Looking dapper.
Hi, Lance. Okay. Well, our semi-annual board retreat in June is really part of our strategic planning and accountability system, as you all know. So this is the time of the year where the board completes their self-assessment survey and discusses board priorities. It's also the time of year where superintendent and cabinet come to the board with some preliminary strategic objectives for the upcoming year. And also, we have a preliminary conversation about potential changes to key performance indicators and targets. And the board reviews the upcoming board meeting calendar for next year, and then you formally approve that at the next meeting in June. So we do all that in June. And then, over the summer, we take all the feedback and discussion from this study session, superintendent and cabinet, and then work over the summer to finalize things and seek more input from you. Sometimes that's through weekly updates and that venue. And then come back in September, at the board meeting in September, to present the updated strategic plan. And then, the board meeting schedule and calendar is that continual monitoring of progress toward meeting objectives and progress toward meeting key indicators and targets. So all of this is all tied together. And it's also tied to superintendent-cabinet performance evaluation, which happens formally in January and June at exec session following the retreats. So just kind of reminding everybody where we are in this annual cycle of strategic planning and accountability. So, the first part of tonight will be that board-focused work. We're happy to have Cindy here tonight, again, here last year as well, to lead the board through a review and reflection process around the self-assessment. And then we'll shift and move toward the strategic planning, which is more like the superintendent-cabinet-focused work. Then we'll get to the discussion about the board meeting calendar, and then we'll end with exec session. So that's the four parts of our agenda tonight. So, again, welcome, Cindy. And I wanted to share a couple of things, just as reminders, before turning the table. What would I turn over to you? The table? The floor, I guess, is what it is. Over to Cindy. But, you know, all of this board-focused work is rooted in board policy. So that whole thousand series of policy is about how the board works together and works together as a team with the superintendent and the superintendent's team. So this is the board's opportunity every year to assess your own performance as a board and talk about areas of strength and areas that you want to focus on for the upcoming year. And so it's a good time to really be thinking about and focused on what are the duties and powers of the board. All that's codified in Policy 1500. Also, the Board Code of Ethics, which is procedure connected to 1500, and those five standards for board governance. So this is the board's framework, just like we have a superintendent framework for performance and a central office leader framework for performance, and one for principals and one for teachers. This is the board's framework, tied to these five standards. And those are the standards that are reflected in the self-assessment survey that you all took. So, this is, like I said, something that you've done every year for the past several years. You know, some of you have been here longer than others, but the board collectively has done this for many, many years. So I just want to remind you of what you came up with last year. So last year at this time, you really focused, as a board, on identifying these three priorities. So these slides that I'm showing right now were from August last year. So we took the dialogue and discussion that happened in June and then came back to you in August to say, remember, these are the things that you identified as priorities, and these are the things that you discussed in terms of strategies. So, and I think you'll notice that some of the things you identified and talked about, right, we can point to. So like the bright spots in board presentations are something that we do now. And we highlight those bright spots in terms of schools or particular areas that are meeting our performance indicators and targets. The meritorious service award really morphed into the academic excellence banquet. And the board still and has done a really good job, right, of being intentional about school visits and getting out to all the school visits through that tracking spreadsheet that was created. So there's tangible evidence of things that you did to focus on this priority this year. This one shifted a little too, but you really talked about wanting to make sure that you had enough time to gather input and feedback from stakeholders before making decisions. So this didn't turn into so much as a, when you discussed it in August, as wanting to have this really formal process, but rather ensure that we're scheduling things. So, for example, materials adoptions aren't, there's one meeting for review and discussion, and then two weeks before you're actually making a decision so you have time for stakeholder engagement and involvement. And then the final example, this was just something that you've talked about and kind of kept on the table. You decided you really didn't want to have, you know, a formal assessment or anything unless it was needed. But this is something that you've continued to work to, you know, model and focus on throughout the year. So I just wanted to remind you of what you talked about last year before you start talking about this year. So with that, I will now hand it over to Cindy.
I did not bring a PowerPoint presentation, but I did bring a worksheet so that you can jot down notes. And it's divided up into the five standards. And then, the last section is thoughts for the coming year. And so, once again, this year, you all filled out anonymously the evaluation. And you probably noticed it was exactly the same questions that you've answered in the past. And by and large, you carried on your excellent track record of being primarily in the always and most-of-the-time categories. And there were a few categories where folks last year either weren't sure or thought it was only sometimes. And this year ranked you as doing it either mostly or all the time. And I can see from the fact that you actually, as more and more boards are doing, identified some specific goals that you wanted to focus on, as opposed to, we'll just do better next year, that those are reflected in your assessment. So the first thing I'd like to look at is called the aggregate data. And it is the first page into the big, thick packet. And this compares your surveys over the last several years. And I believe some of you are in the middle of your first term, and some of you are coming up on the end of your first term. Is that right? And then Mike is the anchor.
Middle of second term.
Okay, okay. So at this point, you really seem to have coalesced into a board. My board also has two folks who are brand-new this last, not last year, but the year before. And that getting to know each other and getting to understand how we operate as a team, because we're a new team, that's come together as well. So I'd just like you to look and compare maybe the last two years and just see the differences that have come up, pardon me, in this aggregate data.
Yeah, I've sent him everything.
So what strikes you in just looking at the aggregate data?
So, quick point of clarification here. So, I'm wondering why we go from 2021 to 2013?
I don't know.
I think I can answer that. So I think, like, back in 2013 and maybe beyond, there was a time where the board here did do it, and then didn't for a long time. Then when I came, we started doing it again.
Gotcha. All right. Well, I just, yeah, because I just couldn't account for that huge gap. So, all right. Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Kind of an odd baseline, whatever.
Well, you know, the results were so good, you didn't want to skew.
Yeah, exactly. Perfect.
Well, I think, you know, I think, for me, what I see is, is it appears that our perception of how we're doing is better. But of course, that could just be our perception. Because inevitably, this is asking us how we're doing. So, you know, to make sure we're not getting too proud of ourselves, patting ourselves on the back here. But our perception is, is we're doing better.
Micah, anything more?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we're. I think that these reflect how I feel. And I feel like we're compatible. We communicate. We are friendly. I mean, I think we work well together. I think we support each other well. And this doesn't surprise me that it's gotten better over the last, from year to year to year, the last three years. And it matches how I feel.
I do see a significant drop. Significant, you didn't have a lot. But pretty much the "I don't know" category has pretty much completely dropped out. And that's a function of your having been in your jobs, but also that you take it seriously and you ask questions, that your senior staff provides you with a lot of information. So that when Wazda asks you these questions, you go, oh, yeah, I know that answer.
I'm looking at last year and this year because that's what, effectively, you have the board have been. Significant drop in some of the time. A few questions it looks like maybe don't know. And I think that may just, it's just maybe one of us just doesn't know how to go do something or find out how to do it. But collectively, all of these in one to five. I think we're in the right direction.
Anybody surprised by the aggregate data? I was not, having worked with you last year. And then the discussion at the end of our conversation about, oh, we want to focus on a few things and see how we can do it in our district. So I was not surprised to see that you were here.
So you're saying that we're as good as you think? You think we're good, we think we are.
Oh, I'm not necessarily saying.
Tracy does a good job.
I'm not allowed to rank you. You guys have to rate yourselves.
You know, and I think, I can tell you, I think I put "don't know" for a couple of these because I don't, I don't, it was one of those where it was kind of like, I don't know what everybody else is doing. I know what I'm doing, but I don't sit there and. So having an "I don't know," I don't think is always a negative. I wouldn't say it's a negative. It's just, I'm not going to speak for everybody else.
Okay.
But the other thing I think is, is that, you know, as any time you're looking at a survey where you're reflecting on your own responses, I think one thing is, is it does show that we are maybe, while I think each one of us sees things differently, takes a different approach often in how we go about our roles as board members. I think the nice thing here is, is it does show that we respect each other's approaches. Because if we didn't respect each other's approaches, we would be saying, well, if it's not my way, then some of the time we do it. When I do it, when we do it my way, then it's good. But when it's not my way, then it's not. And so I think the fact that we're seeing, we're saying, hey, most of the time or always is saying that, yeah, we may do things differently than each other, but I think as a whole, we as a board are all pulling in the same direction, even if we pull in different ways.
Anything else that you want to talk about in just that aggregate sheet? And I know it's so exciting to get to look to the next part. But that's not the part that I'm going to take you to. But that's okay.
Like, all of our marks, except for center five, are the highest it ever been.
I'm glad that you saw right off the top, Gabe, that number three is your super strength here. And if you move to the survey ranking score, one that's highlighted with the different. So this puts in order how you ranked yourselves. And so it starts with 4.0, and then it'll go all the way down to 2.8. And I will just tell you that you have the most 4.0s I've seen in working with the board. And then you fall all the way down to 3.8, and you go on for like another page worth of doing that. So you are an outstanding board, and you're definitely to be commended. Do you have that, this other one?
I do. I have it. I do, I have it. I'm. No, and I'm trying to figure out how to make this comment without it seeming cynical, because I don't want to at all. But I think it's important to keep in mind that this really isn't an assessment of our actual performance. It's just an assessment of how we view our performance.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, 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 I know. So I, yes, it's commendable. I mean, is it commendable what we think? I just think, as we move through it, to keep that in mind, that this is us assessing ourselves.
Well, and the thing here is.
We think we're awesome.
The 4.0 isn't necessarily an A. I mean, it is an A, but it's not. The fact that it's a 4.0 means that you all agree that these are things that you're doing.
Sure.
And that's the other piece to keep in mind, is that there isn't an outlier or there aren't some folks who think the way we're doing things are the way we should be doing them, and other folks who don't. The importance of being a board that works together is that then you let the rest of the district do their job as well and work together as they need to.
I guess that's what I was trying to say, Brittany, is, yeah, this is us assessing ourselves. But the one thing it does say, you can look at a lot of things and say, okay, maybe, maybe not. But the one thing it does say is that we all respect each other and the way we approach things, and think we are all, while we do things differently, we respect each other enough to say, hey, we're all pulling in the same direction. I don't feel like one of us is not doing what they. Not, as we go through this, doesn't fall into this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And from looking at this, to me, in the group that is the 4.0, you are very heavy in the standard three, like Gabe said. And so why don't you just look through the fours? And.
On this sheet?
Yes, please, on this sheet. And the other sheet, you can look at the specific questions. So the rubric on here, it starts with the average of all of you, and then the minimum and the maximum. And then the standard deviation, which for the first page and a half is zero. And then it tells you the question number. So if you're interested, when we go down a little bit farther, like when the standard deviation is something other than zero, then you can look at the breakdown of the answers. So besides the fact that it's standard three, there really is a common theme in there. And the word "create" shows up in almost all of those number threes. And can you think of some specific things that you may have done this year that fall into this category of creating conditions for district-wide student and staff success?
Well, I looked through all these number threes. What actually stood out to me was another word, budget, financial health. And so as I look at number three, just about every question ties back to budget or some sort of financial health or expectation. And I think that's our strong suit. I think the budget, financial health, questioning all. I would add, and I've asked tough questions. I think that's just led to, what we're at today, a great element in terms of our budget situation. That's what I see from everybody. A lot of budget stuff.
And I would add to that, like, part of the thought is, like, with our curriculum adoptions and our, you know, we moved the curriculum adoption up, right? And then, and pay for those with Esther funds. And that's kind of a budget thing. It's also a student success thing, right? Our testing program, STAR, I mean, we've just done a lot of things in that regard, like different curriculum, different way to test the kids. You know, I think improved curriculum, improved testing. And that's always going to benefit kids. And then doing that with Esther funds rather than. So I think that all ties into what Gabe's saying. That's kind of the feeling I get from standard three is just being, just thinking that through. And our staff really deserves, like, the credit, you know? They're amazing, but.
I would say, as I look over these, to be honest, most of these, I remember when I was filling this out, this is almost more a reflection on how well I think Tracy and her cabinet with.
Except for Matt Scott.
With Mr. Scott, Elise, I mean, everybody, Tom, Elise, Matt, all of them have done a, this is more a reflection on how well they're running the district and how we feel like, I felt like, they're managing. And Tracy has done a wonderful job. And to be honest, I think it's often, it's not all, it's often that you see when people are winding down, they just kick back and let things go. And I think Tracy, to be honest, you have done a fabulous job and have not taken your foot off the pedal. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate you've got staff that are also retiring. And I don't feel like we've had a huge lapse. You know, they've just kind of given up or said, whatever, I'll just ride off into the wind. They've kept the foot on the pedal. And I think, for me, that's what I see here is, is, yeah, we have some oversight. But really, I think you guys are, this is more a reflection on how well our cabinet and our superintendent is doing.
Thousand percent. Totally, totally agree. Tracy and Stafford, these guys right here, nobody sees, they're just, they're awesome.
You guys are very nice in that, I mean, thank you. And it's the board's work that helps to influence. It's the oversight piece, right, that really. It's the team, it's the board superintendent team, team, that makes it work. So I just, like, don't not give yourselves credit for the hard work that you do.
We're giving ourselves all the board's credit.
Oh, this is credit.
It's wonderful to hear you acknowledge. And the nodding, everybody's nodding and everybody's saying, yeah. Obviously, we get elected and we're supposed to make these decisions twice a month and go visit schools periodically and hand out diplomas this time of the year. And we have great influence on what the staff is going to be doing by what we focus on. But the work on the ground gets done by your staff, whether it's here at your central office, it's in a principal's office somewhere, or it's in a classroom. And acknowledging that and keeping that in the forefront is another important aspect of the work that you do. And I don't know what question that showed up in.
Yeah, one thing I appreciate about our board, and I think our board does a good job just like pushing the envelope and pushing the staff always. And I wonder how sick of us they get from us just pushing and pushing and pushing and asking and wanting more and wanting another thing and looking into another issue. And we do a lot, I feel like we do a lot of that. And I just wonder how sick of us they get. But we do, I feel like we do, we are always prodding and pushing and asking and thinking and, you know. So I think that's one good thing that we do.
That's really good. And that is probably the best definition of what our job is, is to ask those important questions, to ask why or why not, or what would it take to? Or on the other side, and you've talked about newer curriculum, you know, how is this faring? Is it doing what we wanted it to do?
Find out.
And maybe yes, or maybe not yet.
Not yet.
A lot of times, it's not yet because we're transitioning. But a lot of times, it is, we can see it. We can see the light. And it's not a train at the end of the tunnel. It's something good coming. Anything else about the fours? And those two, those top two, 3.8s are also threes. And again, it's your policies, your expectations that really empower Tracy and her central office team and then the folks that they work with out in the buildings to do their very best work. And staying focused on those things and not jumping around and saying, in January, we'd like to do math. And in February, we're going to put our focus on English language learning, those kinds of things. Then the board is supporting and driving the work that you're trying to get done. And you guys obviously do a good job of that. Why don't you look through the rest of the green ones, which are all 3.8s, so A minuses instead of As? Sounds like you have a lot of work to do there. I would just say, in this, it's mostly or always. So, again, it's very close to your fours. So again, it's very close to your fours. So again, pretty clearly, you feel that your your work is strong in this area. I know you were probably humble and didn't give yourselves all fours all the way through. But is there anything in looking at these that made whoever, and I don't really want you to have to like identify yourself as the person who didn't say four? But maybe some of you, all of you can think about why it wouldn't have been four across the board, why?
I mean, quite frankly, I I look at these, I'm like, I feel like we are fours on these things, like seek community and staff input decisions. I mean, I don't know how we can do any better on that. Follow district schedule and review district plan. I like, don't know how we can do better on that. Like have written goals, the superintendent's specific outcome for student learning, provide information to the public that supports, supported discussion of decisions. Like, I don't know how, I could go down this list, and I like, don't even know how we could improve on some of these things. I mean, we're, I feel like we do a really good job of those. I'm, yeah, these could almost all be all fours.
Just out of curiosity, why do these in anonymously?
I'm sorry, say again?
Why do we, why do we fill them out anonymously?
I don't know. Wazda does that, I don't get a say in that.
Yeah, I was just curious. I mean, because from my perspective, I'd be happy with people knowing my responses because then you can, I think part of the benefit of this is knowing actually where your colleagues, what, where they're, what they're feeling and thinking. But if it's anonymous, I I don't actually know who's thinking and feeling what. And quite frankly, I'm going to be fully honest, I can't remember all of my answers.
Yes, yes.
And so it would remind me what I was thinking and feeling when I filled it out at any given time. And I mean, the fact is, is I think we're all mature enough to recognize that if someone feels differently than us, that's okay. But I think having a non-anonymous survey would be beneficial in that I could better, then we could have a discussion with someone who, let's say, doesn't, doesn't feel as strong, you know? Especially if there's diverse answers, it it allows people to have a discussion and and know who we're talking about. Because I can't even, like I said, I can't remember always what I wrote. Maybe you guys can, but this was three weeks ago. My life changes day to day.
Right. And it's how it struck you in in the moment, maybe you remember.
In the moment, and it may just be like somebody says, oh, yeah, I'm not sure why I put that either. Or they may say, well, here are some experiences that I had.
Well, and I recall from last year that there is a way to kind of, as long as you can recall your identifier, we can find out.
I put Josh on my identifier.
Perfect. So if we have a question about, you know, I was looking, going through and looking for the highest standard deviations, just to look where we had the biggest difference, there aren't a ton. But I mean, my eyes went to question number 27, which is the highest standard deviation for the first three pages. And that question is communicate, does the board communicate its rationale for decisions to the community? And looking down at the breakdown, it looks like the four people said four, and there was one that said some of the time. So I I feel like if that was a discussion we wanted to have with someone that, I recall last year, you have the information about who responded with the one, is that correct?
I don't know who it is.
Right, but you could tell us the identifier?
Yeah, and I did not go back and use the identifier. But you are another board, along with a couple of other boards that I've worked with, that have said, the anonymous part actually gets in the way. And so I will go back to Wazda and and say that.
I think that our board can handle it being open. I think that there are times and dynamics for boards where the anonymity would be helpful. But I do think that there are, if we see a question where we would like to have a discussion about it, if we can dig into it a little bit and see if someone's willing to say who their identifier is, then we can talk about what it is. If someone needs to be reminded.
And like I said, particularly of ones that have larger standard deviations or larger variation, like I was saying, because to me, that it's it's far more beneficial to have conversations and know who's who's talking. I mean, we're all elected officials, we should be responsible for our opinions and why, we don't need to hide anything. And like I said, I think we're all mature adults, we can understand that people see the world differently and have different opinions, and that's great, it's good. I I actually think if we had all fours on everything, that that just tells you that you have a board that's not answering these questions very thoughtfully.
True. If you go to the last set, the ones that have the sort of reddish pinky, not only are they the ones that you scored yourself at 320 or 340, somewhere around there? But they're also the ones that have the higher standard deviation. And I I agree with you, Brittany, that the real value of the conversation is in the things that we see differently? Or in the ones at the bottom where we say, you know, that wasn't a priority this year because this and this and this were going on? But maybe we should make it a priority in the coming year. So I think it's, this bottom part is honestly more valuable for you. But we want to make sure that you get to pat yourself on the back for all the good things that you're doing before, that's a training that they give you. Say something nice before you say something that's challenging. So.
Although some people find that patronizing. I'm just teasing.
Okay. But but there is some real meat for you all in in this last part, because you don't all agree. You have, you have the one that Brittany brought up, which is question 27. There is one other one that actually your deviation is higher than that.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few that are, that was just the first one I saw.
The one that's highest is on the very last page, fourth one from the bottom. And that's question 64. And that's model cultural, racial, and ethnic understanding and sensitivity. And your range is two to four, but your standard deviation is just over one. And that's your highest standard deviation. And so I I don't know what you all might have been thinking about as you were answering that particular question. But it's on page 46 of the big packet.
Page is it on this?
So it's, I read it too. It's on page.
Page five of five of here.
It's right here.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It's this one right here.
Specifically, and you can look at the specific questions in the package, the breakdown, so it's.
So it was a three to two vote. Three said always and two said some time.
Do we want to talk about them all, or? I think compared to last year, though, some of these were lower last year than they are this year. So, I mean, are better this year than they were last year. You know, for example, the, I think that modeling cultural sensitivity was one. Also, treating all individuals, including fellow board members with respect, was much lower.
Is this something that concerns you as a board? Not necessarily that there's a difference of opinion, well, I guess part of it is a difference of opinion. But that maybe there's a different idea behind understanding and sensitivity? You know, some people may be more sensitive and feel that folks who are more business-like are not being as sensitive. And then, let's say that was me, I would need to reassess that this is, to a certain extent, a business surroundings. And yet we're talking about people, things that we decide have very definite impacts on individuals in the community and trying to find that balance. Or does it appear to you all that you have a very different way of looking at some issues? When it comes to this, this kind of sensitivity or.
Maybe that, maybe the last one.
Clearly this, like, clearly this year, we. Things that some people may. Situation. May. I can agree with the way I approach things, starts to. Vice versa, you know, maybe. Tries to deliver a proper message. Personality.
We've taken up some, some tough issues, taken up some really tough issues, and and you're going to have strong opinions on those issues.
And yet I think what I heard Josh say is even in those tough issues, the board has retained or remained respectful of each other and what you've been saying. And that you feel safe in saying what you really think about something, or what you really feel, or what your concerns are.
I mean, even on 18, when you look, I I went in and looked at the actual breakdown, and it's four people said most of the time, and one person said all the time. That's pretty good.
Right.
You know, I, I guess, I guess my question for you guys, because the whole point of this, I think, is not to just, like I said at the beginning, pat ourselves on the back. But but more importantly, I guess I'd ask you guys, are there things as you filled this survey out, survey out, that you had concerns that you would like to bring up with us? For example, I would love it if there's something that I'm doing that is bothersome to you guys or that you feel is a hindrance to our board. Please share, I'm, I'm all ears. I, I, I know I don't do things perfect, and I am more than happy to hear someone say, hey, Josh, it would benefit if you did X, Y, or Z. I'm okay with that. So that's why I say, is there something I'm doing that, or we as a board are doing that we think, one of us says, hey, here's how I think we should do better? I mean.
I don't have anything.
I just, if I had something, I would tell you, like, it's already out there, you know?
You've told me I need to slow down.
Yeah.
Not kidding. And again, I think that's the whole point of this, right? Is that we talk to each other and say, this is our opportunity to talk to each other and say, I think last year we had a discussion and saying, hey, here are some things that that are bothersome to some of us, and we maybe work on that.
We do a good job of talking offline, too.
I think we did a great job of proving that. I mean, I think last year we talked about how some of the board meetings and some of the interactions, I think this year went a lot better, even when we had differences. But is, is there anything else?
I think we do a good job of talking offline, too, you know?
Yeah, I think so, too.
Calling each other, see each other in the halls, talking about something, I think we do a good job of that, so.
Brittany? I mean, I have something separate to bring up, I don't want to, oh, well, bring it away from this conversation, though.
Go for it.
But is there anything that you feel like the board needs to work on, or?
Yes, so, I mean, not relationally, but.
Yeah, that's the whole point.
The one thing that that I would love to see us improve on, just now that I've done a full session as a legislative representative?
Yes.
Is question 63, advocate at the local, state, and federal levels on behalf of students in the district. We really don't have any presence when it comes to the legislative session, and I think that there's, there would be some value. And the legislative rep and some students and staff members actually heading to Olympia. I, I know that in the past, boards have done it, and they've felt that it is not necessarily fruitful, and that might be the case. I think it's just been some time since we've done it, so maybe it's time to do it again.
And I would add a caveat. You said there was no presence. I think you, you've made a presence. We definitely have the presence.
No, that's true.
There is a presence. It may not be a lobbyist or, but we have, I mean, I would argue, we have more of a presence there than a lot of boards do, thanks to your efforts, working hard, and also Mike, knowing someone very closely who has.
But Mike has made the, it was Mike that made the argument several times during this session about how helpful it would be. And honestly, the truth is, I'm not the right person to do this, I cannot go up to Olympia for days on end. But how helpful it would be to have somebody there who could. I nominate Mike for a legislative rep.
God, no. Absolutely not.
That was actually going to be my next question, would you feel comfortable doing that?
No, I can't, it's.
Or would you feel like that'd be too, too much of a.
It's too much of a conflict.
Conflict of interest.
Too conflict, but, but the, but the important thing is, Brittany, is that we, you don't need to go for days on end, you'll go for a day. You can even go over and back. It's tough, but I've done it a number of times. The key here is to get in front of these people, let them know you, let them see you. All of a sudden, you're face, and you have an issue, it becomes real.
Sure.
Not that, not that it isn't real, but there's nothing like going in there and they say, oh, Brittany, good to see you again, what's going on? And they see you, they see you, they see you, and you're making that effort, it makes a difference.
Sure.
Now, you still may lose, but you have to make the effort. And it's just so important to go over there. Again, as I told you, I went over and, you know, several times for Ag this year, sat down, and and I made a difference. So I didn't get, I got this much of what I wanted, I wanted this much, I got this, but it's something.
Yeah.
So you got to take those small wins, because a small win slowly add up.
Well, if we did, like, arrange some students or something.
Because I think it's an opportunity to educate.
Yeah, Brittany could be like, one or one day, and the Mike's kind of there, and maybe Mike can, if he's willing to meet with a couple, another day or two. Or then we can have students there for two or three days and between Mike and Brittany or something, I don't know.
The other thing that you can do, pardon me, is to get started right now.
Yeah.
While they're home and talking with them about things that are impacting you and concerns that you have. And when they're not going to take a vote in three days or something like that, when you have time to really chat with them. And join with other boards in the area that have the same concerns and the the same wish list, if you will.
We actually do do a decent job of that, probably better than most, and we have a very good relationship with our representative, our local representative.
Good.
It's, I mean, some of us better than others.
This is my house today.
It's a stressful week. Right, 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 right. Well, and it's true, it might be skewed too much, because, I mean, really, when you look at the breakdown, one person said, we're always doing it, three of us said, most of the time, and one said, some of the time. No one said, no, never. So we are, we are doing quite a lot, just maybe not in person in Olympia during the legislative session.
So three things really fast. First off, we have our annual meeting with the legislators, you know, in November, December. We need to have it in August, because the laws are already being written now.
Right.
They're, they're not going to get dropped until later. But again, the whole point is, is these laws are being written, or the, or the laws, the bills are being written over the next 120 days, we're going to have a pileup. So if we don't get ahead of this and get in front of these guys, by the time, November, December, they're, they're maxed out, they've already heard it five times. Let's get in front of them, tell them what we need early.
So, but how do you do that defensively? Because most of what we're. So, but how do you do that defensively? Because most of what we're wanting is to
But it's, it's special education, fully funding, all, I mean, the, the story hasn't changed here since I've been here. We want the same things every year. So, you know, and then, so we have a story to tell. We're gonna regurgitate it. You know, yes, we may have specialties we want, but we need to stay focused on that. Number two, really, I think we, I still think we need to look at getting a lobbyist, because again, whether you like it or not, the lobbyists are right in these laws. Or the bills, excuse me, I, I saw, they're right in the bills. We need to get signed up with someone who's gonna be able to put our needs and wants. Yes, WAZA is doing it, but at the same time, it's getting diluted with everyone else's wants and needs. We need to really stay focused. I still believe this is the best money we're gonna spend. Again, my personal opinion.
Well, and I don't disagree, but we've met with two lobbyists and then when we talk about our priorities, it's everyone else's priorities and everyone else is already paying them to talk about the same priorities we already have. So I'm not sure that, I mean, I don't disagree. I would love to have a stronger voice. But I'm not sure that paying the money to somebody is gonna actually get us anything unless we had something uniquely Kennewick that we are seeking.
What was number three?
Can't remember, I got so wrapped up in the
I, I think, I, I think a couple of things that I'm getting from this, one, probably at least we should revisit our discussion about lobbying. Because I, I think certainly part of that, Brittany, is, is that the lobbyists can manage pending, I don't know, maybe you guys, perhaps the lobbyists can manage a lot of the stuff that you're, you're trying to do in terms of following all the bills, letting know where everything is at. Because that's part of what a lobbyist is supposed to do, right? They're supposed to kind of say, here's where we're at with all this stuff.
And they're gonna say, this is being seen in front of the Education Committee on this day, we need you to come
Because that part is extremely difficult and it would be nice to have someone.
And that's what I'm saying.
I'll tell you, one of the other challenges is though, is that where our board has a particular focus and interest, there's a lot of lobbyists that, at least the two that we've talked to, were hesitant to take us on as clients because they have existing clients in districts already that have opposing interests. And so we, we
We just need to find the right lobbyists for us.
There are lots, again, you can't swing a stick and pull up your, I did 17 lobbyists, so it's not like there's a shortage of them. There are several firms, and I know there are, that are not focused on education that would like to get into it. And so there, there's plenty of people around if, if we go that route.
Are there any industries that would be helpful to partner with?
And again, I, I think maybe instead of
It's on the issue.
Maybe going into detail today on exactly what we're looking for in lobbyists, I think maybe we can all agree that it's a discussion we need to revisit.
Sure, that's fair.
Because to, to that, the other thing I think that goes along with this, we, we often focus, when it says advocating on local, state, and federal levels, we often think of this as just bills and laws. But this also applies to grants, to other things that can advocate for our students, other, other ways. That's where I think we can maybe wrap this into another discussion of how we can improve our grant writing and grant opportunities. I know we've, we've talked about having someone working on grants, but finding ways to focus there because I think if we can improve in these two areas, increasing our advocacy in, in terms of, of our, our political advocacy, but also in terms of our funding and extracurricular advocacy. And, and I, I would say in that, from a local level, that, you know, some of the stuff I'm working on with the, the foundation, Edu, or Education Foundation, things like that, again, that's advocacy, where we're bringing in outside sources to help in terms of resources, manpower, funding. As, as we can advocate for our students with these other groups, it goes beyond just politics. It goes into fund, you know, grants, it goes into scholarships and things like that. And so, so maybe talking, broadening the discussion to not just include lobbyists, but also saying, how can we improve our grant writing, grant grant awarding, however you want to say it. How we're, and, and maybe even start looking at a way of tracking that. Okay, how many grants are we applying for? How many are we getting? What kind of grants are we getting? Because I think that's where advocacy also implies that. And it's, again, that's not gonna fall under the legislative person, but it's, it's, I think it's also part of the question.
It's part of that, yeah.
Did I do this? Kind of like if you're, you're in a public event, right? I do this year and then you're like, yeah. Like even, even like to advocate at the local level, I think, well, off the sidewalks, like we advocated with the city. Actually, life and stuff in different places. Do just sometimes. But I look at the back two, two pages. One thing that gets out on the, you know, last third of the comments, four of the comments are I, I feel like we do a good job communicating. There's a few things that maybe we I mean, we have the one here. Expectation of all classrooms. I think it's run a little practically. So we do a
I might have been
District performance to the public in a clear and understandable way and superintendent expectation. I don't know.
We need to get an expectation that on class.
I don't know what that means to anybody who doesn't do that, like.
Are you, you're talking about the, the expectation that classrooms, that one?
Classroom expectations, superintendent expectations, district performance. Clear and understand.
I mean, the key, the other thing to keep in mind, I keep looking at this and keep in mind, this is like one or two people saying, that happens most of the time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like anybody's saying, I mean, really, the only one where we're saying, like, this happens some of the time, but most of the time would be the professional development. Everything else, you're pretty much saying, yeah, it's most of the time. Occasionally, you know?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if we're gonna do a similar thing we did last year, or we focus on a couple of things. If it's kind of communicate on pop-ups, your kind of, if that comes up, it pops up, I don't know.
I think, I, I, my point is I might have been, I might have been the, I don't know, I, I wish I, I wish I knew.
I wish I had my scores.
But, but I wonder if it was me, because sometimes I feel like sometimes the board says something and then it goes through the game of telephone and then the teachers are not maybe hearing that or don't understand that or something. And, and that, in my mind, maybe it was me, because I, I do feel that way. So I think that's something that we could maybe work on is that, is that communication from the board to the teachers, you know, and yeah, just, yeah. I mean, I had a lady call me today about the lunch program. She's like, I just heard you say this last meeting. I'm like, I say this every meeting. I liked about this whole lunch program thing. Everybody's sick of hearing about it. And she's like, well, that's the first time I ever heard it. But like, I don't know, I mean, we talk about discipline, yes, we can, you know, we talk about so many things and then teachers are like, I don't know if you guys feel that way. I thought, you know, I'm like, what? I don't know why you feel that way. We say this all the time. So maybe there's a that we can do there.
Maybe that's something you want to work with your new superintendent on.
We don't want to work with him. Just kidding.
Yeah, I know. That's why you hired him, right? But on, on just a set method of, of doing it.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe the superintendent communicates with the staff anyway. And adding a paragraph that says, and what the board focused on in this, in this last meeting, that might be of interest to you is this, and they recognized
Yeah.
this, and they were curious about this other thing. You know, you're, you're a large organization and I, I'm willing to bet, like my school board, not everybody who teaches or works in your district is at home, online, listening to your board meetings every, every couple of weeks. They're doing everything they can to just meet with their families. And so, no, they don't, they don't know what, what we do unless it's a very large initiative. It's the new curriculum like I talked about, or it's the celebrations that you've talked about. So I, that might be something to work with your new superintendent on.
To do that. One, one thing that came up, I did a visit to Amistad today and just had a chance to read to a couple of different classrooms. It was super fun. But afterward, was having a brief conversation with a couple of the educators there and the thought, the idea came up, and we've talked about it before, we've just never done it. And I don't know if the board has done it before, but a handful of times a year, two times a year, maybe three times a year, once a quarter, having a school board meeting at a school instead of here. I know the logistics of it would be nowhere near as easy as doing it here, but I think that we would see a different turnout as far as having teachers there and having parents there if we moved every once in a while, our meeting to some, somewhere that was more central to parts of our population.
I'd be open to that.
I know, I think maybe it's done.
But the logistics, just from about recording and
Yeah.
I think that just, you know, logistically, that would be the biggest barrier to figure out how to overcome because we're required to
Sure. But I think if we, if it's, if it's twice a year, Joseph, bless your heart, can stand there with his iPhone and broadcast it to, you know, I don't know exactly what the I just think in 2025, we can figure out how to do a remote school board meeting. Or at least try it once and see what happens.
Beach, you're all, you're all over this.
I, I think it's, it's certainly something we can look at. I mean, again, part of the, the idea, I think it's great. Part of the idea of this meeting, right, is, is for us to say, hey, what are some things we want to look into and think about?
Yeah.
Next year? I think, you know, and, and that is one of the questions to me. My first thing is, is, okay, it'd be interesting to see, does turn out change if we change the location?
And it may not. I mean, it may be like, nothing.
Yeah, it may not.
You know, but
But certainly, if it's something I, I would be open to looking into. I mean, if, if particularly if there's a, a school or something we're talking about specifically in, in that meeting, being there, I think would be helpful.
Well, I think, and if we, if we were to hold a meeting at a school, it would be appropriate for us to have a presentation from from the school, to learn about the school. The other thing, this is only slightly related, well, it is, it is related, but I wanted to say it here so it could be in our heads. From the Amistad meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, it was impressed on me, and then on my visit today, that we have a unique opportunity with our board, at least in our area for now, that Josh speaks Spanish, Micah speaks Spanish. I can, if people are patient with me, I can get my point across, but I understand pretty well. If I'm not mistaken, I think Lance has some handling of Spanish. So I, I think that it would go a long ways too, that if we were, if we were to have, it doesn't have to be a school board meeting, but if we were to have a board activity or an information night, or maybe it's the right time to introduce, you know, Mr. Hanson to the community. But we have a capability, we have the, the opportunity to be able to do that in another language. And I think that that would help with a lot of the communication and relationships in town, so.
I think what I'm hearing you say, Brittany, is you already have some things that you're gonna do. Maybe looking at doing them in a different place, maybe in a different language,
Sure.
maybe in a little different way would mean some of the things that you're talking about here. It's not, and that's what I'm hearing. It's not that you're not necessarily doing these things. It's kind of like we talked last year. You were doing a lot of these things, but you, you weren't putting a spotlight on them. And last year, you kind of put a spotlight on a couple of things and now you feel comfortable saying, yes, we are doing that. One of the ones that jumped out to me on the standard deviation is on page four, about the fifth one from the bottom, which is question 13, govern using policies that align with research-based practices. I was so surprised that you all were not forced on that, because I'm willing to believe that that's what your staff is doing and that what they're bringing to you is that. And maybe it's simply that you haven't highlighted that in nobody's said to you.
So
We, we didn't come up with this on our own, even though they're all brilliant and we know that. But this, this is research-based practice in teaching kids to read or, you know, whatever it is.
So the word there that caused me to give it a low score was govern using policies that align with the research base. Didn't say teach, didn't say educate, it said govern. So when I say govern, that's us.
Right.
So.
So I come, or Tracy comes to you and says, this is our proposal and we want you to adopt this policy or choose this curriculum or whatever it is. Your action is the governing action.
Correct.
So I guess what I was thinking is, if you don't know that what they're asking you to do is in best practices, you might have answered this question differently. Now, that's just my outsider's perspective. I don't know what you were looking at.
I'm, I'm guessing, and I don't know, because I think I wasn't always on this, but just guessing from the personality of our board, that I think Mike's right, that the, probably the difference there is not, I don't think anyone's arguing that our policies are research-based. I think the argument here is whether or not we as a board use those policies. Is that correct, Mike? Is that what you're saying?
Okay.
That there might be some times that we make decisions and aren't necessarily
aligned with your policy?
Maybe. That's what I would guess.
Well, and I guess all that I would say to you then is there are times when we very much feel that's what, what we need to do. That is our, our responsibility. Hopefully not too often, but sometimes. Acknowledge that this is different than the policy, that it, it's an exception to the policy, whatever it is. But I think it's important to, to let, this is another communication tool. Let your community know that you have a particular policy that says A, B, C. Now we're going to look at what it is that we're being called upon to do in light of that policy, just like Tracy did with you at the beginning of today. These are the policies that are why we're doing this. I, I know we've been doing that on our board and it has helped reduce the questions, especially in the community. The ever-present, why are you doing that question? Well, one, we were given that role by legislation, so we have to pass the budget. And two, we're following the, the policy that deals with the budget and this is how we're looking at it. It hasn't answered everybody's questions, but I think the vast majority of folks are saying, oh, all right, you, you aren't doing it just because you've always done it that way, or because you guys, you know, rolled some dice and the answer was four and that meant you're gonna do it this way.
Here's something else I would say to the, to the, again, I just, I don't like the way this question was written.
Okay.
So the bigger shoe is, is govern using policies aligned with research-based. So I guarantee you that a lot of the laws that came down are not research-based. They're garbage. So to say that we're governing based on that and research-based, it's not research-based. Got passed and shoved down our throat.
Amen.
And I think to some, to Mike's point, I agree with that. I mean, and I, I'm in an industry that is heavily there's a lot of research, a ridiculous amount. And, and one of the things that has come out more and more is, is how fallible the research is. The findings are often not reproducible. And so people have the misconception that because it's a research study, that it has the answer and that, that that is the answer. And then you find another research study, like in orthopedics, we often say, you can find a study that proves almost anything you wanted to say. And so I, I think sometimes, and, and to Mike's point, when it comes to governing, often there is no research behind what our legislature passes. It is, it is opinion. It is, they can, they will find whatever they want to support their ideology on, on whatever side of the issue you stand. So I think the better question, or better way to say it to, to Mike's point is, is maybe in governing, are we, are we looking for best practices within, within our within the topic? And then are we trying to find proven methods that may provide opportunities for success? That to me seems like a better way of saying it than saying, are we using research-based? Because quite frankly, we can find research that says anything you want and they usually occur in cycles. So whatever's popular now will become unpopular and then 15 years later it will be popular again.
Like my Bill Bottoms, Rebecca and stuff.
Yeah, oh, I'm getting my back.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna take that back to WAZA. I don't know that they'll change the question, but I do know
It's not research-based.
Because they like
Yes, it is, because you all did the, did the activity and so
I'm being a jerk.
I, I know. But, but I will say that the two folks who are most involved with this are, are very receptive to feedback. And they want this to be something that's usable over multi-years to help boards do their work well. So
Surprises me. I said, the biggest feedback I would give is, is I think there would be, it would be highly beneficial to have it not be anonymous. That's
be highly beneficial to have it not be anonymous, that's, that's the most important, because again, I, I apologize.
Or at least have the choice. Or at least make it easier to identify, because I do think you actually probably might get a truer response from most people with it being anonymous, but then making it easier to figure out.
I just, yeah, because, I, I mean, I'm going to be honest, I, I would love, I can't remember all my answers. If you had a choice, if you had a choice, I think Brittany's, Brittany's point, there's probably some.
Or honestly, just one more sheet of paper that is a copy of our own responses?
Yeah, gives an answer of my responses.
Like that would solve it.
That way, if I choose to, to say this was what I did, right, you know, this is, because, because, you know, some of these, I'm like, like on that question, like you said, you, you put the line, so I was thinking that could very well be me, because I can often be very cynical about research, I mean, that might have been me, too, I, I can't remember.
Cindy, do you know whether or not WASTA has considered, or if they already have an, a survey for cabinet assessing the board? Because I'd be very curious about that. Could we do that anonymously, please? That would have to be anonymous.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
But, I mean, it, this is helpful to be able to kind of evaluate our collaboration and our focus and, and, you know, where we're moving, but, I mean, there's a million people in this room who've been doing this professionally for several decades, and I'd love to know.
At this point, WASTA does not have that. I thought I had seen somebody else, but I'll, I'll check with WASTA, and certainly say that that was a suggestion.
And actually, Brittany, maybe that, that might be something that we may want to look into as a board, is maybe not anonymous survey, which makes information watered down, but maybe have an opportunity where we have a night where we can get feedback from the board, or, or from the cabinet on things the board, or maybe find a way where we can get better feedback, because I, I agree, we all have a certain perspective, but the perspective I don't have any idea of is the perspective over here.
Right.
And I would find that enormously valuable if they were saying, hey, Josh, you always come up with these pie in the sky ideas that are really hard to implement and are a pain in our neck.
Yeah.
It would be better if you did X, Y, and Z first. Great, I can change, I, I'm not above changing.
So Josh, you're, I like where you're going, but as an employee, employee, I would tell you to go jump.
That's true.
Because why am I going to go to my boss and say, you know, by the way, all the things that, that was stupid, and I just think we should do something different.
You're right.
But, but would you anonymously?
Your, your best.
Anonymous won't work either, because it creates a closure.
I don't understand, I don't have a problem with that.
No, but your, your best chance in having, I've done hundreds of staff surveys, your, your best chance probably to get something like this would be for, for the superintendent to collect the information and then present it.
Okay.
To the five of us as a, this is, this is what the feedback I've got for you, because again, it's just in nature, people aren't going to be like, you did this wrong, it's going to be a lot more positive with limited negative stuff, because that's the easiest way to do it, but if.
I'll just interject a couple of things from my perspective, you know, I, I wouldn't want to put staff in that position to do that, and, and like, I'm not even a fan of like 360s and things like that, I mean, I'm definitely a fan of getting feedback and open dialogue and conversation, and we expect our principals to do that, right, to get feedback from their staffs, and, and their students and their families, but this is, like, I just don't, I don't think that that would be a good situation to put cabinet staff in, it's not like 300 people, you know, giving feedback or something, but, and I agree with you, Gabe, and I don't know if Lance, you know, I'm, I'm hesitant to say much, because I don't want to speak for things that, you know, are plans for next year, but I do think it is the superintendent's role, if you're asking outlandish things of me, and that's why I like, I like all the communication to come from, from you to me, so, and then I work with my team.
Yeah.
And so I'm that filter, and I'm that outward, I, I can have that conversation with you to be like, yeah, that's, you know, and we've had those conversations.
Yeah.
About, yeah, no, some, some will be more than others, no, but, and that's, that is the superintendent's job.
All right.
Well, I mean, all I'm really looking for is just some, I mean, I, I don't know what I'm doing, you know, and I, it would be helpful to have someone tell me exactly how I'm doing it wrong, and how I could improve.
Well, and that's, so that should, yes.
Okay, well, then will you tell me? I don't care, I have.
A good, a good approach.
Has the one person you can fire tell you all that.
That's what I mean, is I don't know how to do it.
I think a good approach is like, is like, having meetings with the cabinet, right, like, you know, you, Tracy and Tom sit down and, and you guys talk through things, right, and then you, Tracy and Tom, like, I think that's more the.
I think at the end.
Okay.
We all, I mean.
I would just find that.
We want feedback, so.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. Okay, this discussion, this discussion makes it clear that we are open to feedback, and don't be afraid of us.
Did you want to say something?
You put the mic down.
I would agree, exactly what Tracy said, I think it's important with the board and superintendent relationship, because that, there's a, there's a conduit there that, that allows organizational information come to the superintendent and to the board and back and forth, and I feel like the relationship you have, not that I've seen it personally, but I, as you talk and interact, it's very similar to the one that I would have with my board, in that if there are things that the board feels like is moving in a direction that puts stress on the system, that's maybe undue, that we would have that conversation, have the ability to assess that. So I, I get, I, I agree with Tracy, I think it's, it's tricky when you start getting into that piece, because the real question is, so what do you do with that? Do you like respond to a cabinet member about their concern? That, I think it starts to get outside of the, the framework that you would have with the person for whom you, you know, expect to run your organization, so that would be, I think Tracy probably said better than I did, but I just agree with what she said.
So I had a dumb idea, throw it out.
Well, you have to remember that we have, the board has one, that's Tracy, that's it, now Lance, and that's, we have no control, no say over anyone back here, they have to be nice to us, but after that, that's kind of where it ends.
But I'm looking for the opposite, right? I mean, I don't want to, I, I want, I want to know.
Correct.
Right.
Totally with you, but yet, again, being in a position of power, sitting where you sit, your feedback is going to be muted at best, they're just, I wouldn't.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it, I get it.
What I'd hope to, someone could fire me and say, you know, you're, you're just really kind of sucking at this, Brittany, I don't, I don't know how to bring it to you. So it's just, it's just, they're just, they're just, anyone who values their jobs is not going to do that, so that's just reality.
I, I think the other thing that can happen is if you talk to the superintendent and you say, you know, in this one area, let's say special education, it's, it's beyond me.
Sure.
And I think that some of the times, the questions I'm asked, or the things that people want me to make decisions on, I don't have enough information, I don't get it. Superintendent will, will find a way to get you more information. The fact that you reach out and say, I, I need help from you and your staff, then the superintendent picks the person that's best to help you, and it might be a site visit, it might be sitting down with your special education director, or it might even be, you know, something that we could read, or a webinar, or whatever, but again, doing it with your superintendent, who is the part of your team, and then he or she goes to their team, says, okay, guys, how, how can we best help our board member? That, that's really the, the right direction to go, and it doesn't take that much longer, because your superintendent, here's what I found, my superintendent didn't want to be the one to have to tell me all the stuff I didn't know, so he's really good at finding other people who are experts, who will share their expertise with me, so that he can spend his time doing his job, and, you know, he has an incentive not to have to have me in his office five days a week.
Sure.
So.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying, I think we're all open to feedback, because saying that's too crazy doesn't seem like it, we haven't thought through it, we'd love to know about it.
Now, along those lines, another thing, looking through these surveys, this is off topic, but different topic, one of the things I would like to see, and, and I would like to be, as we, as we start talking about goals and objectives, I, I would like to see, looking through this, because that's the whole point, right, is we're looking through this to figure out, hey, what are some things we can work on, what are our goals and objectives? And, and it's something I, I've brought up in the past, I'd, I'd really like to make it a focus this next year, is, is that each student, particularly as they go into high school, has a personal pathway to graduation that is reviewed by, reviewed together with their parents and family, with a counselor, or with some, someone sits down each year and reviews that, there is a clear pathway to graduation and their plans for post-graduation. So as a freshman, we're sitting down with our students, because we talk about wanting to, you know, having each kid achieve at the highest level, all of these things, I want it to be where there is not a single kid that when they, they are leaving as a senior, can't say that for the past four years, they have constantly sat down with someone revising their personal plan for, for what they're going to do with their life after they leave here. We're not focused, and the focus of this plan isn't on graduation, the focus on, of this plan is on post-graduation, so we're saying, how do we get you where you want to go? We're getting them to think not about a piece of paper, we're getting them to think about their plan, so, so that means we've got a pathway, I think we've talked about this, a paper that when we sit down freshman year, here are the classes, what are, what are your plans for when you graduate? You want to go to vocational school? Okay, let's sit down and talk about it, sounds like Tri-Tech may be a perfect fit for you, where are we going to work this in? How are we going to, I know we've started some of this.
Mm-hmm.
But, but I really want to get this down this next year, because I think we're going to see higher achievement, the more kids understand why they're here, why they're in school, why they're studying, because all of a sudden, it's not, I'm going to school because I'm getting a piece of paper, there, I'm going to school so I can become a plumber, I'm going to school so I can go on to college to become, to, to get a degree and go work as a banker, or whatever it might be. I, I really think it will make a difference for these kids, the more crystallized we make that plan, the, the more real it becomes, and so that would be one of the areas where I think we can make a big difference, I think we can focus by, by providing, providing a clear plan, again, working very closely with implementing our counselors at that level, where they, they very much are involved, they know, and maybe we have to shift our counselor, and how we do our counselors, where it's not by alphabetical order, but rather by where they want to be, because if, that way, those counselors can become experts in that area, or, or however we want to do that, but, but that's one of the areas I would propose to the district, we really make a focus on, in terms of the high school kids, I don't know, what are you guys' thoughts?
Well, do we want to, do we want to wrap up the survey?
Oh, I thought that's.
And get into goal setting.
Exactly, I didn't know if it was something different, sorry.
We're going to get there.
Okay, I apologize, see, this is, this is why I need her to keep me off track.
No, actually, the thing that I really like about that is that the survey can just be an hour's worth of meaningless discussion, unless it leads to saying exactly what you've said, we want, we're, we're focused on our kids' outcomes, that's what number three says.
Yeah.
That's where you're the strongest, here's another way we can be focused on our kids' outcomes, and, so, no, I, I think that fit right in, and what I was hoping for, not to just say, okay, you got fours and three-point eights, and a couple that you didn't seem to agree on, but what does this tell us about how you work together and what you want to do next?
So I, I think what I heard, just to summarize on the kind of board goal-setting part of this and board priorities, the focus on advocacy, and really looking at what are, what's currently in place and how can it be enhanced, and what are maybe some new ideas, and not just legislative advocacy, but the foundation work and the bigger picture of advocacy, so I took all the notes that you were talking about connected to advocacy.
With that, maybe we even want to look at creating a, shifting, I mean, especially, well, we can talk about, but shifting the position from a legislative position where you're trying, because if we were to get a lobbyist, we don't need to have you follow every single bill, and that's got to be overwhelming.
It's crazy.
But, but if we shift it to more of the legislative, or, or the advocacy person whose, whose focus is, is how managing the board in our advocacy work, whether it's legislative, or whether it's, you know, grant, right, grants, or whether it's community, maybe that might be a, a better, a better, a different, or better, I don't know, better, but a different way of approaching it, so that one person isn't overwhelmed by trying to follow 40 bills through a process where only two end up getting passed, I mean, it's got to be for YouTube.
Right, 1200.
Doesn't say, that, that would be, that would be nice.
So I've got that, so that kind of whole area of advocacy, and then communication, and looking at things that are currently in place, how they could be enhanced or changed, and I just wanted to bring up one thought on that, when you were talking about the organization, understanding like where the board is coming from, right now, we, like, here's just a little example, and it would take some discussion and figuring out, but there's a board brief that comes out after board meetings.
Yeah.
With video and links, but it requires people to watch the video, or click on the links and actually read the policy, that, that's a simple one that could maybe be enhanced and maybe even tailored for staff, like, that could include a message and some high points or something, you know, it's like, it's like there's something in place, but maybe it's not, maybe nobody's like looking at it.
There's our.
It's just, like, that's one little idea.
Plug AI.
Yeah, I mean, it could.
Like fathom, and they can like literally take all the notes of a meeting or something.
Yeah, or there could even be like a, you know, a rotating board message in there or something, I, again, I'm, I hesitate to share my ideas, because I'm not, like, I won't be here, and so, but, and I've got good notes, Lance, just.
Fire staff while the board meeting.
Yeah, I know, but anyway, so what I'm really trying to focus on is just hearing what you guys have said, your ideas, and then, I'm sure Lance has taken notes, too, but just looking at those things that are in place, and maybe how can they be enhanced or improved.
But, yeah, and, and I guess, yeah.
Was there anything besides advocacy and communication, with those, the two biggies?
But I would say.
Coming out of this, or?
Yes, no, just coming out of this board conversation.
Coming out of this, the other thing I would, like I said, is, is really how do we actually really push, you know, a lot of these, and, and even things we, we think, we say, hey, we're, we're doing this most of the time, but how do we really get our kids to achieve at the highest level, like that?
And I feel like so, yeah.
Part of the next conversation.
But I guess my point is, is next year, when we sit down here, we're going to talk, I would like that to be the third thing we talk about, we talk about communication.
I'm, I have it written out, I want to say that, we just got to get to that next part of the meeting, so we can do that.
Okay, so we're, okay.
I'm writing for that.
I think, Josh, if, if I, I think it's connected to standard four.
Right, 100% agree.
And, but it's more about what, what, what are the, what's the work, the strategic work that's going to happen this year, like connected to our goals to make that happen, versus something that the board's going to do.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, and it's coming up.
As long as we're addressing it.
We're going to.
Where we address it.
Okay.
I, I am good and happy.
Well, again, congratulations, folks, on the great work that you're doing, and the discussion that you have around the work, and thank you for letting me come and visit you again this year. I hope you have a great summer.
Thank you so much, Cindy.
Thank you so much, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell your chauffeur.
Going to take a break?
Okay.
Like seven, six, okay.
Let's get, let's get back on here, we're going to start off with.
We're back on.
Still on goal setting, or are we?
We're, we're on to part two, which is, exactly. Well, the, the first part is the board self-assessment and goal-setting, and now it's, okay, now organizational work.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay.
But the goal-setting is more on how we want to.
How the board wants to function as a board in what areas, yeah.
That makes more sense.
Yeah. Okay, you ready then?
Yep.
Okay, great, so segue, right, there's board work, and then there's the work that you hire a superintendent to do with the superintendent's team, and so, and that obviously is codified in policy, too, so that's a good segue, right, from focusing on the board's priorities and some things, and then what's the work of the superintendent and the team and the district, so that's what we're going to be shifting into right now. In policy, it talks about goals and objectives and a strategic plan, an operational strategic plan, which we have, and the current version of our plan is in front of you. How we have worked this for the past several years in Kennewick is we have a vision, mission, and strategic goals, three student-focused goals that are our priority, and family, staff, community, and district-focused goals that all serve our stu-, our student-focused goals. So our, our mission, vision, goals stay the same every year, but the objectives change, the objectives get updated on an annual basis, and the objectives are the tangible efforts, the work that we're going to do. And the objectives are the tangible efforts, the work that we're going to do, continue to do, new work that we're going to do to reach those goals that we have and meet our performance targets, which we'll get into next. So this is the part of the year where we start to identify the objectives for the following year. So these are, remember all of our objectives. And these are the things that you hold the superintendent and cabinet accountable for accomplishing. And of course, we work with many, many people and stakeholders to get this work done. But so we'll reflect on how we did toward achieving these objectives. That part happens in exec session. But this part is about, okay, what, where do we want to focus this next year? What work do we want to do? So in terms of process for updating these objectives every year, where we start is looking at what work is underway. I'll just give a quick example. We just adopted new literacy materials, right? So we're going to have to implement them next year. That's a piece of work that's already identified for next year. So it's like identifying the work that's underway, the things that we know need to happen based on data. Also looking at new laws and requirements and making sure that we've got a plan for implementing those. We get interest and feedback from the board. So that's what we're doing right now is we're discussing what we have so far to share with you and then getting input and direction to help inform the next iteration of the objectives. That's work that happens in July and August with superintendent and the team. And then you'll have a chance to review those. And then this document, formal document, comes back to you for approval in September with updated objectives for the year. Okay, so I'm going to start just with briefly, you have a big document in your pocket on highlighting a few things at a legislative session that we need to be planning for and paying attention to. There's House Bill 1296. It's the implementation of parent bill of rights. There's a lot of updates to that, as you know. I have not, we have not yet dug through it in complete detail. But there's some changes from the current law that's in place delineating rights of parents and legal guardians. There's some wording in there about complaint processes and how OSPI is going to receive and investigate complaints of non-compliance. And there's quite a bit of language in there about accountability for school districts, boards, and superintendents and sanction language and that kind of thing that really we need to look through carefully. And so that's, that's a an important one. Again, you have the whole document in front of you and I just have pasted it here. I'm just highlighting a couple. Another one, this one that to highlight is special education. So the bottom of page two, that's, we knew this was coming and we've been planning for it. But it, providing services now until age 22. It's currently 21. And now that age or providing services has changed to 2022. So that has implications for our community or transition program that serves students. Once they complete high school, they don't technically graduate, but they're they're done with high school. And then they go into the program that helps them learn job skills and transition into the community. So now the students will be with us till age 22.
Tracy, real quick, do you have an idea how many people that would or that increase would be?
Do you know off the top of your head, Matt?
So it's, it's not massive, but it's still, but it's, it's, it's a number and it's expensive.
Yes.
Okay.
Have they increased the funding or changed? Will they, they will continue to fund them through this, through 22 though, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll still get the money.
Yes, we'll get them.
Not enough.
Yeah, no, no, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
They they did though, right, make some changes. I'll highlight that on the next page on, I didn't really have anything to highlight on page three. It's a lot about funding, which obviously we're paying attention to in some of this. You'll see the results of when we present the final budget on June 18th. But on page four, connected to the special education funding, right? The the multiplier is increased to 1.16. There's some other kind of funding changes. They're not necessarily directly tied to the provision of service till age 22, but it does change the overall calculations about special education funding. So more on budget-related items at the June meeting. But if you have any particular questions, we could note them here and make sure that we incorporate answers to them at the June presentation.
The competency-based education stuff that's on page three, four?
Yeah.
End of three, beginning of. Will that have much of an impact on things?
You know, that's what we're going to have, need to dig into. We do have competency-based policy language and like, yeah, and and course completion. And you'll get some more information on that. That presentation was going to be at the last board meeting, but we moved it to to the 18th. This one, though, like we haven't dug into it too much, but there's some competency-based, like, education programs identified by the state board. So schools that were part of the this collaborative, which we were not.
Okay.
So we just need to understand what all is involved there, but haven't, haven't dug into it quite yet. On page five, this one, I I believe we're already meaning this, but we need to just double-check. It's part of our health curriculum currently that providing instruction related to sex trafficking prevention to all students at least once between grades seven and 12. And we adopted some materials, board approved some materials last year. So that one, just wanted to highlight, but we think we are already in compliance there. This one's just sort of interesting, so I wanted to bring it to your attention on page six, especially since we have commencement coming up. Right now, there's law that students who have tribal affiliation can wear Native American regalia. We're have been very communicative and and doing everything we can to make sure that that's well-known and that those students' rights are protected. Beginning next year, the laws is, the law is saying school districts must permit students to wear items of cultural significance. So it's really opening it up more than just tribal, cultural. We, we don't know yet and we're unclear. I mean, so it's just one that it's on the list. We've got to dig into it and really understand what it means and then update policy accordingly.
Although it says, if they are traditionally worn together with or attached to their gown at high school commencement and other official graduation. So things that are traditional, it should, as it reads, it should traditionally be associated with graduation. So that would, there are only a handful of very limited things that are traditionally traditionally associated with graduation.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
Yeah, that's a landmine.
Again, one, it's one where we, that, these are ones where we don't just rely on what the summary is. Here, we dig into the actual language of the law and really understand what is it that this is requiring now. But I want to be really clear, it doesn't change anything for this year. The other one, we're already working on this, but on page seven, exploratory career and technical education courses for middle school students, which we think is great because, and I actually think it's tied to what you were talking about earlier, Josh, in that, you know, students starting to have experiences and explore different CTE-type things, career opportunities, so then they can have those experiences in middle school and then build on them in high school. They're different, they're exploratory courses, not preparatory courses, which is what they take in high school. But it starts that, you know, sparking interest and helping kids think about careers and what they want to do next. We already have some of those in place in our middle schools, but it's some expansion opportunity there. On page eight, there's a new law called Alyssa's Law. It doesn't have anything to do with Alyssa. It has to do with emergency response systems and like panic alert buttons. There's, it doesn't necessarily, I did look at this one a little more closely. It doesn't exactly say you have to have panic alert buttons, but you have to have, it's, it's about enhancing safety, which we're all for. And there's some options for how you can enhance safety in terms of communication and emergency response. So we need to look at that, decide what the options are and what makes most sense in our system, given all of what we have currently in place. So that's one we are definitely looking at very closely. The next one on page nine, I know you're already aware of. We talked about it last year, but it's the, it's the one about inclusive curriculum and ensuring policies and procedures conform to the new model policy, which I haven't seen the new model policy yet, but that's House Bill 5462, inclusive learning standards. So that's something that will need to be looked at in depth over the summer because it needs to be in place by October 1st. Okay. Also in the bottom of page nine, just incidentally, this is one I believe we already have in place too because we do have stop the bleed kits, but we just need to make sure that we're fully compliant with the new law. It's beginning not this, this next year. We have a year to prepare. It's beginning 26, 27, that we have to have bleeding control equipment for traumatic injuries. But like I said, we do have stop the bleed kits. There's new training requirements about how many staff have to have that training. So there's a little more time for that one. But I just wanted to highlight, we, this comes out about this time every year and we start looking at it very carefully to see what work do we need to incorporate into our planning for next year. Some of this you might see connected or reflected in some of the preliminary objectives that we're going to share, but there's others that we just haven't had a chance to look through yet, and that's summer work.
And I guess to the point that that Mike made earlier, and I talked a little bit about, there, I mean, these are just the bills that passed. And there, it's not realistic to think that any one board member is going to track all of this stuff on a regular basis. So to, so to think that Brittany can manage all of these, it just isn't realistic. I think, I think to the point that was made, we need to think of a better way. It isn't, isn't so burdensome on one board member and is something that maybe can be a little bit more manageable for the board to to keep an eye. But really, at the end of the day, we don't have that much control anyway.
If you were just suppliers, you wouldn't have.
There's a couple.
Maybe if you let me do a feedback survey, I would know.
The other thing, the other thing I just think on this too is there's, there's stuff on here that's not funded. So what can we do to ensure minimum compliance to the law without having to tack on a ton of additional costs and stuff that's not really community-driven, so.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight the fact that we do look at that. And so now I want to just share with you the preliminary, some preliminary, not full, just some of the things that the team and I have started to identify that we believe is work for next year. So I think this would be the opportunity for the board to say, yeah, no, we don't, we don't agree that that's a, should be a focus for next year. Or what other interests, priorities do you have associated with this goal that you want the team to be thinking about as we form objectives for next year? So I won't read all of this, these words to you, but the whole category of student behavior and accountability continues to, I believe, be a priority from board members. It's a priority for us. There's work in place. We did things this year. We need to continue to strengthen that work. And so the first four bullets that you see there connected to our goal of all students are safe, known, and valued really have to do with strengthening systems for student behavior, high expectations for student behavior, and accountability systems for those.
Mike, I know this has been a area that you've expressed significant interest in. Is there anything you'd want to be added?
Uh, yes, I, this may be the right time, maybe not. I came in here.
Is that what we're doing that right now, right?
That's what we're doing right now, yep.
So thank you, Josh, for the question. I think that when I say this next thing, like, there's going to be some people that this really makes, some people are not going to like this comment and some people are going to love this comment. It's going to be very polarizing. I actually, when I look at our goals and I see the goal safe, known, and valued, which is over this, I don't like that goal. I think it's just, this is too fluffy. The word that I never see in our thing is excellence is, you know, like, I want to see the word excellence. I want us to rather, I mean, the reality is, big lions eat little lions in the, in the real world. And and this whole like safe, known, and valued fluffy things, you know, it's just like, it doesn't, I don't think that prepares our kids. I don't think it does anything for our kids. I think actually, it's detrimental in some degrees because when they get out in real life, it's like, why are people not nice? You know, it's just like, this is not how the world is. So I actually would love to see this goal actually changed. Because I, like, when I see the, our vision, our mission, and I see this, I was like, I don't, that's not, I don't identify with that at all. And I want the word excellence, achievement, you know, like, that's what I want to see. And so when we're going to our counselors, probably that's another thing is like, are we counseling kids for excellence and achievement? You know, I mean, so that's, I'll leave it there.
So you're, you're suggesting that.
I don't even like the, yeah.
I, I know. See, to me, talking about excellence fits in like Ready for Their Future or Engage Learners. Is that too much of a departure to? Because I think there's some things in here that are important to talk about. We need.
Oh, the the discipline is a huge thing. I, I, I went on record saying a lot of them, but I don't think we're doing that right. I don't think our district is doing that right. And and I, I think that as we get more and more further down the line, aligned with this thing, I think that that's proving to be correct, that this, you know, so I think we could do a lot better with the discipline.
Or maybe all students are safe and understand personal accountability?
Like, I want kids to be safe. I'm not saying I don't, right? I want them to be safe. I love our resource officers, I love that. And I love that they're valued. I think that is really important, that we, we, kids know that they're important. I don't know, like, are we pushing kids? Like, that's, like, let's use that language.
Yeah, what would you?
I would probably scrap this whole section and reimagine it, honestly.
Before we go there, I mean, the the components of this section are student behavior and accountability, student safety and security, social, emotional learning, student voice and value. So of those four, are there, of those four categories, are there any that you? Rather than start at the top and rewrite the whole thing, I think it's more helpful to talk about what it contains. And then you can decide what it's called.
A couple of things. First of all, where, like, I just want the word excellence in something. Like, I feel, you know, like, where are we, where's it? Where is the language that shows that we are driving for excellence? We are pushing our kids to be great. They were looking for them to be high achievers. Where's that language? Where does that exist in our plan? You know, I, that's what, I feel like I'm missing that.
I think we could put that, i- if that's something important, we could potentially maybe look at it either the Ready for Their Future or Engage Learners. Excellence would fit in perfectly there, especially the Engage Learners.
Could.
Engage learners, you know, achieving excellence. And excellence is variable based on the individual. I think to Brittany's question, I, I think in our goals, student behavior definitely needs to be, and I think you'd agree, that's why I brought up. These, these things need to be in our goals. So the question then becomes.
Does the word safe, known, and valued, does it really encapsulate student behavior and accountability, student safety and security? Yes, I guess, emotional learning, student voice. We replace the, maybe replace the word known with something else? I don't know.
I, I think the one issue, I, I think there is maybe perhaps some, the one concern I have is, this puts the impetus solely on the district and not on the, on the, on the students. Behavior is a decision that they make, not a thing that this, we help enforce behavior, but the student's behavior is based on their own accountability and choice. And perhaps maybe, maybe that's your concern is, is that this, this goal doesn't seem to encaps- encapsulate the active decisions that those students have in their choice and in their behavior. That maybe.
I have thought of it that way, but yeah, I think that's true. I have thought of it that way, but yeah, I think that's true. I think what you said is true.
Maybe that's part of what's bothering you here. Cause like you said, you agree that, I mean, we all agree that we want our kids to be safe. We want them to be valued, but really when we're talking about these objectives, me, the biggest issue is, is the one thing I, I will, you know, the 2024, 25 goals. I, I think when it comes personally to, to student behavior is, is, is an increased focus on personal accountability.
Yeah, like.
When it comes to behavior. The kids recognize that this, this is not us making them do things. This is them having a choice.
We want them to be model citizenship, citizens or something along that line.
And finding strategies to be successful in their choice making to provide them outcomes they seek. No kid wants to be a failure. Every kid wants to succeed. So how do we help them learn strategies? And this goes with social emotional learning. It has to do with, with student behavior and accountability is helping them understand and develop strategies.
Like if it's like model citi- to be, to model citizenship or something like, okay, maybe that, you know, cause if you're modeling citizenship, you're behaving better, you're, you know, I don't know. It just, this, this, this seems so like, I don't like it. Huh? Yeah. There's some, there's a couple of words I want to use. I'm not determined, I'm trying not to use them, so I'm sort of nudging instead, shrugging instead. Very fluffy. If it doesn't have any kind of deep connection meaning.
So, I mean, of course.
I know we can, but I was saying like the theme on here, like the goals are like.
Well, but that, but, I mean, that.
Or you can just, just add one line, one word.
Safe, accountable. And like, I like the word accountable, replace accountable with known.
Safe, accountable and valued?
Yeah, I, I like that better.
I think known and valued could be considered almost synonymous. I, I think word semantics argument.
I like the accountable thing, yeah. That puts, that puts a bonus on the kids.
And, and what I would say is, is whatever we're putting as the goal, and I actually like these goals being short.
So do I, yeah.
I do too.
These concise goals are very nice because it's simple. But then that goal should reflect what we have, which is what we've done. I like this because I think you do a good job of saying, here's a big goal, now let's break it down into specifics. One question I'd have is, as a board, are there some specific feedback we want to give to Tracy for 30 days and Lance?
Yeah.
On specifically on accountability or on any of these, we, we want them to work specifically on.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Real quick, it's, it's just a statement that you asked a question. I actually think the word accountable does fit in nicely with social emotional learning because that's primarily what social emotional learning is, is teaching accountability over your behavior and emotion.
Yeah, personal accountability. So just one, one practical matter that, for consideration. The, what's, let me just tell you what's very easy to change. Okay? What's very easy to change are the bullet points underneath, what do we mean by safe, known and valued? Cause this document gets updated every year, right? All of the, all of the objectives are easy to change, all of that. We're just, and it's not impossible, it's just a practical matter to consider. We've got these goal posters with the, with the, just the big, you know, the simple goal language all over, printed and all over the district. And it's not, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying that any changes to those words or anything just need, it'll just require that district wide update. Whereas these bullets of what we mean and how we always talk about it is what do we mean by safe, known and valued? It could be like account, taking personal accountability for whatever. Those bullets easily change.
Even more of a reason to change them. Because everybody is seeing those. Those are what, that's what's everybody, that's what's everywhere. Known and valued is very similar. Safe, accountable and valued or something along those lines or I think, I think we want to drive that home that, you know, you, you own that decision, you own your grades, you own, you know, life is what you're going to make of it. You know, whether, whether, you know, whether you, you know, whether you feel comfortable or not, and that's a great thing, but you really have to just achieve. That's how life actually, actually works, you know? And I just.
Is, is the bigger annoyance the cost for just needing to actually change out?
It's just like, does, yeah, it's not an annoyance. It's just a, a piece of work that would need to be done, right? Yeah, I'm not, it's not a, impossible.
We love your input, Tracy, but, but in 30 days.
I know.
It's not your problem.
Less than that.
Not that you're counting, but Lance, I would love to hear Lance's input. Do you mind putting the mic so that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely. That's why he's here.
So it's not, you must be on mute or something. We can't hear, we can't hear you, Lance.
Sorry, I'm on, I'm on, okay. I, I really feel like there are probably a couple of items that are being discussed and that are values that are being held by board members that may or might not be. I think you're trying to put something into a category that may not necessarily be here. So I'll just, I'll just say this. One of the things that's essential for all students when they are in schools, especially in larger systems, is that they are known by an adult. And I think you have to have processes in place to do that and that they have value. Having said that, when you talk about, for example, accountability on the student side of it, you're better at working with those for whom have, they understand that they are valued and finding ways that they understand how they fit into a system. And going back to like what Mike has said about excellence, for example, when students and also the other pathway piece, those things that you do where kids are tracking their progress and they're connecting to something is what you want. So when I hear like known and valued, that means that we have a caring adult in every building that cares about a kid and knows them individually. Cause when you don't and the kids feel like they're not embedded in that, then it leads to bigger things, which are potentially discipline things. So that's, that's, I guess that's what I'm hearing in the discussion. And I think you can do that and connect that. This one right here is, cause you have, where Tracy's at, and I can tell you this is everywhere in every school system and every place. When you just look at like, we didn't get past student behavior and accountability, right? Like we didn't go past that. That particular piece right there is something that comes to me frequently, not necessarily by per se, but by staff members and others. And how are you working to address that behavior piece? And I think that was a question that came to me also. So big picture, I think that if we are looking for goals or ways better, reduce our behavior pieces. So I looked at some other, your other data when it came to the surveys, remember you asked two questions of schools? And I'll have that later, I don't want to get into that because I don't have. But there's some things there I think that need to be addressed and that's where I would see this conversation going. So that's, that's kind of my two cents. At the same time, I work for you all. So we want to change a bunch of strategic plan posters. That's, I guess that's, that's part of the deal. The other part that I would ask, and I don't know how they were formulated. Typically, when you have strategic plans in the group, you have a greater expansion on who provides input from that, and that's also your community. So that's something that I think you want to have a lens for. So the way that Tracy has us broken out on your objectives to reach her strategic plan, that's where you're kind of, I love you, talk about ham radio, if you're familiar with that. You have like your course tuning, which is kind of your big picture stuff. And then you have your fine tuning. And I think that the board is kind of like the bigger piece. And then we're, we're accomplishing those objectives through the staff pieces. So there you go. That's my long and short to that. There's a, there's a lot there wrapped around. Honestly, there is. And I think that those words and the way that that manifests itself may have different meanings. But I want our kids to be known by everyone. I want our goals to know our kids. They have to.
And just to remind, thank you, Lance. Just to remind everybody, and just so you know, Lance, in terms of process, so this strategic plan was developed when I came to the district through a very big process of community, staff, parent input. I always like to tell the story, I remember very, very well that one of our, we were meeting with our migrant parent group. And it was getting, we had a whole process around getting feedback. What do you value? What do you, what do you want for your child? What, how do you, what do you see your child? All these questions that all of this data went out into inform this. And we were meeting with that group and that was the day, later that day, what was the day? I hate to. Yeah, Friday, March 13th. Remember that day?
That's true, Jim.
That's the day that governor shut schools down during COVID. So then, I mean, I'll never forget it, right? And so we were in the middle of this big comprehensive process. Then we shifted to completing that process online through Zoom meetings and surveys and everything. Anyway, there's a pretty big process involving lots and lots of people. And, and it was like six years ago, so. We don't need to finalize anything. This is all about seeking input from the board. And then really nothing's going to be done before the next meeting. And I, I don't mean this, I'm not trying to be funny. This is summer work. This is, this is Lance and the team taking all of this input and figuring out what to bring back to the board later in summer.
I think it's all about doing less right now.
What's that?
They're all about doing less right now.
But the fact is, that's why I asked Lance's opinion was, because to your point, this is, this is forward looking. And let's, you're stepping off the boat, Lance is stepping on and taking, taking.
Right. And, and we're just not leaving, like there's, there's, there's work in progress, right? There's lots of work in progress. So it might be, it might be more beneficial tonight to just focus on the objectives. And then later on, and maybe even want to have another study session later in the summer or something. Talk more about the, the goals themselves and the wording and that kind of thing.
And probably at that point, it would make sense particularly because Lance is going to be stepping into that new role. I mean, for all we know, he may want to do the same thing that you did six years ago. And if that's something Lance wanted to do, fine. You know, part of it is, is I think we want to make sure he feels.
Of course, yes, this is, yeah.
This is, he's directing the ship.
So does that make sense?
Well, okay.
Moving on, because there's something about student safety.
Yeah.
So one of the presentations that I attended at the WASD conference was one from, hold on, it was transforming school culture with security enhancements. And it was from a woman who was an assistant superintendent at Oxford Community School in Michigan. This is the, it was an active shooter situation. And she went through and detailed the security posture in their district at the time. And there are a number of things on here that I don't, that kind of schools is not currently doing. And so I met with Scott Child and Matt Scott shortly after that conference and we discussed a number of things. There's still some things I'd like to add. I, I'd like us to investigate Alice training. I'd like us to think about, you know, we're doing a good job with school officers. We already have, there was a lot of stuff on here that we had, already had. I think the, there seemed to be in that meeting some hesitancy to speak openly with the students about the fact that we're training for an active shooter situation. And I just think we need to get past that as much as we don't like that. But that's the way to have them best prepared. They even went as far as to talk about, and I, I'm not suggesting that this is the answer, but throwing it out there as maybe a direction ahead that one of the things that helped so many of their students survive that situation was because they'd had training to understand what shotgun sounded like. They knew what that was. And so immediately were able to get out of the building because they knew what they were hearing. And I'm not sure that our students know that or would recognize that. So I'd like to see us be very, very, very proactive, not only on, you know, prevention, but also defense as well.
So specifically, one of the objectives would be review.
Yeah, so update emergency response system, next bullet point. Add Alice training, which is the training that goes over what an active shooter situation actually is.
So review the, review the, our current board Alice training and how it might be.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do Alice training.
So I didn't totally understand your point. So were you saying that, that you felt like as a district, we didn't want to tell our kids that we're having, I don't, I didn't.
And, and I'm, I'm thinking back on a conversation that I had, you know, several months ago. But that was one of the concerns and we all shared that concern. But we didn't move forward with any of that because there's some hesitancy to introduce that topic to the children. But having reflected on it for several months now, I think there's, there's value in, in doing that.
Just two quick things. There's Alice model I'm familiar with, and then there's just kind of the simplified run, hide, fight.
Yeah.
And, and that's really where we've been focused and more focused on training staff and drills for students.
Sure. And maybe I just need to go to the school and see the drill.
Yeah, that is something, there is some law in place about the realism that you can not use when you're, when you're doing drills. So you don't cause trauma.
So, so maybe our objective for this next year would be to review the, review our current training for, review our current emergency training, including active shooter training and assess the policy. That, so.
I don't know if it's the policy, the policy is probably sound. I think it's just.
Okay, or, or review the, the current training models.
And like our protocols and what we can and can't, should do.
Say, do we need to do more?
Cause there's a balance between preparing kids and.
And traumatizing them. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to traumatize kids, but.
Okay, and then the other one I mentioned, that's the Alice, or Alice, sorry.
The bill.
Alyssa's law or whatever, yeah. The, the bill, okay. So associated with all students are engaged learners. We've got implementation of the new literacy materials K5. We'll be in year two of the clear math implementation. You know, we just adopted the new accelerated education platform for online learning. So it'll be implementation year, first year of that. We're continuing to implement, we'll be in our second year of STAR assessment system wide. And just that continual focus on essential standard, standards, format of assessments, progress monitoring, multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS and professional learning communities. That's a big, big focus. And then inclusionary practices in special education. The, the law will be changing in 2028. Currently, it's, it's a severe discrepancy model is used to qualify students for special education services. And that is going to change to a response to intervention model. That lines up really well with our MTSS work because for all students, and remember, special education students, general education students first, what we want to do is identify, use assessment and identify what is, what does the student need to be able to learn and achieve at high levels? And then intervene appropriately, provide the right level of support. If that doesn't work and inch it up to the next tier of support, that's very similar to then at some point, if all of these interventions aren't working, does that then mean the student needs to be assessed for special education services? So it's all kind of connected, but that right now, this severe discrepancy model is still in place. So that's something we're continuing to work on. So we'll be ready for implementation when that actually changes in 2028.
One of the objectives I'd like to see on this one is, is I would like to see some beginning utilization and particularly some specific objectives that come out of utilizing our new database. I can't remember what it's called.
Link it.
Link it. So I, I'd like to see particularly maybe some of the cabinet members using that link to, to find, to begin to mine that, mine the data there to find specific objectives that, that in the process of mining that, they find things that we say, hey, look, we think this will make a difference. So maybe say, identify one or two specific core objectives in increasing student engagement through the LinkedIn system. Something along those lines. I think that, that system is, is a great system, has an opportunity to really help us change how we focus on our, our outcomes. And maybe just making it a specific point here of saying, how can we use our LinkedIn system to improve those outcomes? to improve those, to improve those outcomes and engage students better? Does that make sense? What do you guys think about that? Well, I, yeah, I'm, I'm never sure how these, I mean, there's so much overlap. I think it's more student-based because it's focusing on student outcomes and, and student performance. And that's why, in my thought, I thought that would probably be the best here. Because it's kind of like the technology stuff was my thought. It's, it's a piece of technology similar to the STAR assessments that we have. It's a piece of technology that we can use to, and I would love to see people starting to use to say, hey, just like the STAR assessments, teachers should be using those. How can we implement this LinkedIn system to really help to identify different cohorts and different groups to discover trends that might improve outcomes?
Sounds good. I'm not sure where this fits, sorry, Micah, but it's definitely under all students are engaged learners. We, we really need to do something. And I don't know if it's policy, I don't know if it's procedure, I don't know if it's professional development. I don't know if it's just highlighting the priority more, but we, we, we have to. It's past time to take control over the Chromebook youths in the classroom. It is happening way too often that kids are given a worksheet, takes five minutes to fill the answers on, and then have the remaining class period to watch YouTube, have. But it's all students are engaged learners. And so if it is, if it is. Right, I mean, if it's enforced that we do not, I mean, our policy is written. The Chromebooks are used for academic purposes only. But if we start enforcing that, and if teacher, you're right, part of it, a lot of it is teachers, but it.
I'm, I agree.
I, I, I don't know, I don't understand how we can expect students to be engaged learners when they have, when they have those Chromebooks right there. They're not going to do it. They are playing, I mean, anyway. They're playing games, watching YouTube, they're on Pinterest, they're all over the place.
Offer one thing on, on that topic. I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. I think the, the issue that you're describing to me is about engaging instruction. And because if, if it's worksheets, like back in the olden days when I was teaching before computers, if that's how you taught, and then there was a bunch of time left over, kids would just be doing something else. So it's not really that the problem is the Chromebook maybe necessarily. The problem is the pedagogy. That's been, why is there so much extra time to be doing anything, I guess, right?
Yes.
Wonder.
And what you had access to.
Exactly. I know.
Very different than what kids have access to now.
Yeah.
So.
But I think with that is, is that, that the Chromebooks, one, aren't misutilized, but also an understanding that a Chromebook is just not a piece of paper and a pencil that's used electronically. Is how do we implement, and, and maybe this goes to teaching is, you know, teachers more, but how do we help our teachers learn how to implement technology in a way that is productive and utilizes the technology, whereas it's not just simply, because if all the Chromebook is used for is a different piece of paper and pencil, well, let's just go back to piece of pa, piece of paper and pencil, because then they don't have access to distraction. Because not only is it in spare time are they watching YouTube, it's when they're sitting in the back of the class or sitting in a place where teacher can't see, and they're just on YouTube or playing solitaire or whatever it may be while lecture or discussion is going on.
Yeah, not, not what we're wanting to see happen.
Being more diligent in our phone policy has.
Yeah, we will, we will see engagement skyrocket when they're not on.
Well, quick thing, so we talked about the, the goals. The goals are actually what set the objectives, right? So the second bullet point goal, the top, they're receiving individualized equitable inclusive support. This might be a good place to replace that with something like striving for excellence through high expectations and individualized support, something like that. I would like to see maybe a change like that.
Perfect.
Yeah, it talks about the individualized support, and that, that, that applies to a lot of different things. But we're still, they're striving to, you know, and I think we're good at that. We try to provide that. So I think that would be the statement and those, and I have written down on.
Great. Yeah, and that's a good point. If you have, you know, you can always email those to me and I can give them to Lance.
Yeah.
Okay. So this one's on the college and career readiness. It's a little difficult because this, this presentation and recommendation connected to the first three bullets was supposed to, was originally scheduled at the last board meeting.
Yeah.
But we bumped it to June 18th. So it's, it's going to be hard for me to explain. But you're going to hear about, you're going to hear the financial literacy requirement recommendation on June 18th. And what I'm talking about, what we're talking about here in terms of the meaningful support for counselor facilitated high school and beyond plan and college credit, which is exactly what you were talking about earlier. And so, I mean, there's a whole presentation for it, and yeah.
Maybe, I have a lot to say about it. Maybe we'll just wait, maybe we just wait until that. Yeah, I think that probably makes more sense is, is once we've gone through the discussion.
Yes.
My issue is, is, yeah, I know we talked about it before. Like I said, I know we've got things in the process, and it sounds like next meeting, we will certainly discuss that more and figure out how we fine tune that for the goals.
Yes. Okay, career technical education exploratory electives. We've had some preliminary conversation right around middle school dual language expansion because of our increased program at Eastgate and those students coming up now. So we need to get that plan finalized and ready for implementation, not next year. To, next year's still a planning year for implementation. And then there's some technology and AI work, right, that we've got underway. That first bullet's really about technology management. It fits into what you're talking about. It's not exactly what you were talking about, Brittany, but expanding those tools for teachers to be able to manage and monitor what students are doing on their Chromebooks. So anything more to add in this area at this point?
The, the one, I don't know if, I never, I, I may be, I can't remember what was in that presentation, but we had talked about looking at doing a feasibility study to explore different ways that students earning credits. And we talked about whether that changing our, to a seven-period day to, you know, we had talked about looking at different models.
That's, that's all part of the work that we did that will get presented on June 18th of where we landed.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Sort of related, this, this is the time to put it in. I don't think kids should take Chromebooks home during the summer.
Okay.
I think all should stay.
Yeah, so I'll get you an update on Friday. But so for K, I just want to make sure I have this right. For K eight, no, six, five. It's late. For elementary, elementary students, all those are getting checked in and we're moving to a cart-based model instead of the one-to-one. I mean, it's not one-to-one right now for K2. They have iPads, but instead of being three, 12, one-to-one, where students take those home.
One kid, one laptop.
Right, like you issued a Chromebook and you take it home. We're moving to cart-based model for elem, for elementary. Classroom cart stays at school, you use it. It's not a, it's not your own device you bring home on a day, day-to-day basis. Yeah. Do I have that wrong? Eric, well, okay, I, I should, when, when I say one-to-one, I'm sorry, thank you for, there's still going to be a computer for every student. It's not that, like, students are going to have to share computers. It's just not the, typically, the one-to-one means I've issued, Brittany, her own Chromebook, and she brings it back and forth to school every day. That won't be the model at elementary. The elementary will be, every student has access to a Chromebook, but it's staying at school. So that's a shift that's getting implemented next year. And there's multiple reasons for doing that. It will still be that if student gets issued a Chromebook, beginning at sixth grade in middle school, and then takes it back and forth. So I don't know if you're referring to all students or what you're thinking, but.
I'm referring to this summer. Is there a reason why students have their Chromebooks over the summer? Especially if they're not enrolled in any type of educational activities.
Laws broken, what are they doing?
Yeah, let, let me, let me follow up with Eric a little bit more on this topic and get back to you.
Eric gets to monitor a bunch of kids on their Chromebooks all summer long.
I mean, it is our.
I don't want them to come up.
Just not, Eric, like, students do right now, take them home over the summer. Yeah. Check them back in.
Is there a quick why?
They can play video games, Josh.
And why they're not.
They gotta get YouTube. I mean, I get it. They gotta get it fixed, but no, really, all kidding aside.
Why don't we have to check them in every year?
Or they can get outside.
We think they're taking them home to look up educational opportunities.
Maybe can the parents elect to decide to have them home? I'll, I'll tell you that, like, from a parent's perspective, when they were first introduced, I was sitting at the table just down there. I came to one of the get to know Kennock Schools nights. This was clear back in 2018 or 2019. I was sitting at a whole table of moms, and we were all very interested to know what these Chromebooks were capable of doing. And I know they've come a long way. But the presentation was entirely talking about how the kids would be safe on them at home, how, how they could do this at home and this at home, and these things wouldn't happen. And every single mother there said, we are not worried about what's happening at home. We've got that. We're worried about what's happening at school. And that is still, six years later, what I'm saying. I'm not worried about what happens at my house. I mean, no, sure, take, I mean, I, I, I'm a proponent of leaving them at the school, for sure. But also, from a large segment of the parents, I'm not worried about what's happening at home. I've got that, but we have to look at what's going on at school.
No, I agree at that point, and I think we're locked in on that.
Yeah.
But then there, but then in a couple, in a week, they're going to take them all home.
Yeah, I don't want them home. They, I grab them, they go into a cupboard, and they don't touch them for the rest of the summer.
Yeah, go outside and do something.
Yeah, to do that.
And maybe this summer, we can look, because we can see what they're getting on, right?
Yeah, that's actually a great idea.
We can actually look and see how much educational material is being. Yeah, and see what it's, whether it's being used or not, and whether, what it's being used for. Because certainly, you could make an argument, we're opening ourselves up to liability by giving them basically marginally overseeing computers when there's no educational value that's going on in the summer.
Okay, so let's, let us dig into that a little more. But I agree with you, Gabe, and I don't think it's feasible to.
No.
Change for.
This year.
This year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kids, if you want it, you better be on education stuff every day.
Yeah, then I don't.
Use it this summer.
Don't get all bad stuff. They're looking.
Okay, keep going. I'm just going to highlight a, a couple things here. The expanding parental control for web filtering in terms of partnering with families. And that's connected with what you were bringing up, Brittany. And you've been part of that pilot, and you've had a couple of, of parents part of that pilot.
Yeah.
We're still waiting for the, for Center Insights to finalize that enrollment study. I gave you an update last week. They're waiting for, wanting to get a few more survey responses. And then they'll provide the final report. And so that'll be an opportunity to look through that and determine if there's recommendations that would just help with family education and engagement. We've got a levy coming up, so that's going to be a biggie in terms of developing and implementing that informational campaign for the 2026 EPNO and Tech Levy. Rob is going to be working with others and with Lance to create ways for the community to get to know Lance. And it'll be our 20, 20th year of our dual language program. So that's something that we want to communicate and celebrate next year. Anything in this goal area that board wants to?
Yeah.
Talk about?
Just one quick thing in the goal. We talk a lot about like diversity, diversity, diversity. I wish we would change that and talk about bringing people together, bringing people together, bringing people together. Rather than talking about what's different about us, let's talk about what brings us together. So like that very first bullet point, I, I would love it to be something like bringing families together through respect and appreciation or something like that. Just kind of change that dynamic, like, here's what's different about us. Or instead of that, we could be like, here's what's going to bring us together. Like that's more inclusive language.
All right, anything else? Okay, staff, and there's overlap here, so you'll see overlap with the first goal, where we talked about student behavior and accountability. We know we really need to expand training and support for staff for managing and addressing behavior. So that's connected to what we talked about earlier. HR's got some plans for modernizing recruiting and hiring strategies, especially for hard-to-fill positions. Things like bus drivers and other, other positions in our system continue to be challenging to fill. We will implement that apprenticeship residency and teaching program, but it's really dependent on state funding, and it's not entirely clear to us yet whether or not we're, that program is even funded. So that was the program that we applied for and got accepted to participate in. And we're really excited about it. It was about like growing special education teachers, but we just don't know if it's going to be able to happen. They'll be, next year's a bargaining year, collective bargaining year with the Teachers Association. So that's a big piece of work. We're implementing a new online management system for managing teacher professional evaluation, excuse me, teacher and principal professional evaluation. And so that's something that's been on the, the to-do list for a number of years. And it's exciting that we're going to be implementing that next year. It's, the system's been adopted, there's plans for training. And then some professional learning supports for counselors. Counselors have identified some additional needs and desires for professional learning. Oops, sorry. So anything on our staff-focused goal that?
We're going to continue to expand the professional learning communities, aren't we?
Yes.
That's, I.
And, you know.
What I've seen there, that seems to be a really, really positive program. The numbers prove that out, so I'd like to make sure we're.
Hundred percent. And this, this year, and again, we haven't kind of figured out everything where it goes yet. But because there's so much overlap, we ended up putting that in the instruction, just for now, under instruction and assessment in terms of, you'll see that professional learning teams. And all of that is the work of professional learning teams or professional learning communities. But it should probably just go in both. But yeah, good, good call.
As I recall, it's, that's been something Lance has, he talked a lot about was his professional learning. Both went to communities and his work there.
Sorry, that was a question or?
No, just a statement. You do a lot with the PLCs.
Okay.
As I recall, correct?
Yeah.
PLC is school of the year.
Yep.
And I hope.
Okay, for community, you'll hear some more at the June 18th board meeting is when we present the volunteer data and talk about those strategies. So continue to work on that every year and want to make sure that all schools have a community partner and all of that. Last year was our first year with the co-campaign with the United Way of Benton Franklin Counties. We developed that Student Success Fund. It started off really small. We haven't actually dispersed any funds yet because there's only about $1,000 in there right now. And so they're just rolling it over, but we want to continue to grow and build that program. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to say something. And so anyway, those are just a couple of the highlights here. Anything else on the community goal that you want to make sure we're thinking about?
I would like to propose one is, I, I would like to, I would like to propose that we reach out to the Pasco and Richland school districts, have maybe.
have maybe one, two members meet with them. Just to collaborate with them so we can talk about different issues that exist in our community and we can collaborate with them in terms of, I mean, even silly stuff like, hey, let's make sure that all of our spring breaks are on the same week because we're all, if, if we're not talking, it's hard. It's an easy way where we can say, hey, let's make sure we're all on the same page on some of it. Makes it easier for fans and students and they have kids that districts or, I think, I don't know. That's my thought. It might be beneficial for a member of our school board act as in.
I feel like the superintendent's talking.
I do.
Every, every.
Do you think it would be valuable?
I think we'll get, oh, no, I think we'll get.
I mean, do you think it would be valuable to communicate with the other school boards?
I think as needed.
I think the superintendent's talking is good.
And we, we do, um, collaborate regularly and meet at least formally at least once a month.
If I'm the only one that thought that, then.
I think it's kind of happening. Sups all the time. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We set up the meeting with you and.
Yeah. Well, I, I think it would be less talking budget and more about how we can, I mean, yes, we are three different school districts, but we're really one community. And it's just by random lines. I mean, please show me where the boundary is between Kennewick and Richland. I'm sorry, most people couldn't find it. So my, my issue is, is we act like we're three different distinct units. We're not. We really are one community. So why don't we act like one community? But anyway, I, I, again, if I am the only one, I am happy to say that's my issue. So we'll shoot that one down. No idea.
Okay. Um, our, our final goal, you know, a lot of our funding and enrollment, um, budgeting, maintenance, planning falls into this goal. So just highlight a couple of things. Obviously the levies, um, got the state funded, that should say, uh, core modernization program, um, happening, the construction for TRITech will be happening. Um, got some new systems, routing software that we talked about with the board for transportation, um, getting that underway, implementing some improvements with our help desk ticketing and tracking system and technology security. There's that bullet point, the transition to cart based student devices for K five classrooms and, um, the data system that that's linked, that first bullet point under efficient, effective, secure data and reporting systems. So, um, anyway, anything you want to add or talk about in this area? Okay. And obviously if you, you know, think of things come to mind after the board meeting, just let me know and we'll kind of get this on the list for staff to take a look at and the team to explore and work on over the summer and then come back with a final proposal for you. Okay. Um, real quick, we don't have to talk about this tonight, but we're going to get to board calendar in just a minute. And you, there does need to be some study sessions scheduled, um, for levy planning purposes. And so I just wanted to include in here, these are some of those cost out items that you asked about during the last study session we had with just some preliminary levy planning. And you're curious about what some things would cost. So, uh, I can, I'll include this in a board update too, just so you have it, but we did cost out some of these things. Um, in terms of like, uh, other implications for implementation on some of the athletic things, the, the student athletic survey data will be presented at the next board meeting, highlights of that, because one of the areas we present on is, um, participation in extracurricular activities and sports, et cetera. So there'll be some more information we'll share about like feasibility for implementation for sports because that's been coming up. And you've asked about, you know, there's been interest in boys swim and dive and asked about like girls football now that that's a new WIA approved sport. So. Okay. So just, just some data for you. I wanted to throw in there. Uh, uh, we've been getting the, the board's been having discussion and getting direction all along. So that's you're done.
Four point oh.
I don't know that you want to get into this tonight. Um, in past years, we've looked at this in August, but I just want to remind you, right, that we've got these performance indicators and targets. The board in the, you know, looks at these every year to say, are these, in some years we've had specific thresholds, then we shifted to incremental increases every year. Uh, the board's talked about looking at the state of longitudinally, like, you know, fourth graders when they're, then fifth graders, sixth graders instead of fourth graders in this year compared to fourth graders in the next year. So I think all of that has to get, um, maybe a little, a little more time for the board to talk through. Like I said, well, I, if we, last year we did a study session in August. This was part of that study session. So then there was time in August, in a little bit of September to update anything before the strategic plan got presented for approval in September. So if you have thoughts about this that you want to share tonight, you can, or we can, you can get them to us later. No. So this is the new board cal, well, yeah, this one starts in September. Right now there isn't anything for August, but I thought, you know, you might want to. So if you want to go there, um, we could get into the board calendar. Okay. So, so we're just, you know, closing out this year's calendar. This is next year's calendar. So for this year, we've got the June 18th, uh, board meeting and then, um, the July consent only. Board members attend remotely meeting. Yeah, that's two minutes and a half last year, maybe? That's one July.
Yeah, what's the date?
Double check here. I want to get confused with this year's calendar and next year's calendar. Um, that's July 16th and it's just that about a minute and a half long board meeting with board members. Phone in and, um, we're here and we just do consent items, right?
Next day of our meeting.
Okay. Then, um, then August is, there's one, um, and I, I, I changed what I said earlier. So right now on the calendar, there is, uh, one board meeting in August, on August 13th, and there is a study session. So that could be that, the conversation about maybe here's the next iteration of the objectives based on conversation tonight and then discussion about the key indicators. And anything else you want to talk about? Cause I won't.
You're going to be here.
You're going to come back.
You're going to be online with me.
When do you want to have a study session about levy? At least one?
So the study session, September 24th, right now is thought to be a levy.
I would suggest that strongly.
Probably a good idea.
What is the September 10th? Oh, WASDA.
Yeah, you guys had asked for that one to be built in so you could talk about WASDA priorities and platform and.
Might have to be. Or annual.
Right. Okay.
But it might have to be adjusted depending on when push out their actual.
Okay. Okay.
We've all done it. So I don't know if we need to have a study session as.
So, I mean, if you don't want that to be a WASDA focused, I mean, and it wasn't somebody from WASDA. It was just you guys talking about WASDA. But I mean, that could be levy if you want that to be levy or. I mean, what's important right now is just the dates and kind of this, the, the skeletal because it shows where we're coming back and, and monitoring, board's monitoring these like things. So this is just like the skeletal kind of regular one, but I just want to remind you, you do need levy study sessions. And I put, we put in here, um, like the quarterly legal briefings, um, when either November 12th, probably December 10th. It just, I think the filing date will be December 12th, we think. Is that right, Tom? Yeah. So we just don't know if the 10th is cutting it too close for the resolution, approval of the resolution and the appointment of the pro con committee. So you'll see it on here twice in November and December, just as placeholders. But, you know, all that can get kind of figured out later. So it's following the same pattern of the second and fourth Wednesday of the month with some study sessions.
So the one quick question I have is, are you saying we may need to do like a December 3rd meeting or something to do the levy resolution? Or would it be November 12th?
I think you just, yeah, you might just need to have it ready to go November 12th if the December date's cutting it too close. And it might not be. It's just that it's got to be filed. And I think it, it really literally just means we've got to get it there to file it. So it should work. Yeah, there's options probably.
Correct.
My only question I would ask, do we need to look at dates for May again? If we're going to banquet? I would just maybe look at that. Those work better.
Yeah. I know that that C WASA, they're having that in June next year. So that was the, the Southeast WASA, the, um, um, what's it called? And it's an event, I guess, where, and that's like we honor a community partner. And so that was conflicting this year, but next year it's tentatively on the calendar for a Thursday in June. Okay. All right. Yeah. And then this will come, this will be on consent agenda for, or an item. I don't know. I can't remember what we did last year, but it just, you, you formally approve it at the June meeting.
Do we have a, and then graduation next year? What day is that? Do we know?
I do not know. Do, do we have graduation dates next year? Yeah, it's probably, should be, should follow the same. Yeah.
Cause we, we bumped the meeting this year in June. Obviously we're here on the 4th and not the 11th. So that's why I was wondering, we want to do that again or? It's June 6th.
Okay. And what day of the week is?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
We can always adjust.
Yeah. So the June, yeah. So graduation will happen before the June meeting next year. Is that right? Okay. We should be okay.
Next meeting, we have our public hearing 2526. All students are here. Your data. Get to know KFC. All right. So we will move session. June 30.
Hey Lance. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi. We'll let, okay. We'll let you go now.